First, Southeastern Public Service Authority, as we refer to them as SIPSA. And today, we have their leadership team here with us today. First and the briefer today is our executive director, Liesel Devery. And she's going to grab the podium. But I want to take a moment to introduce their team because I feel like we've been partners with them for all 14 years that I've been here. And their current chairman is Mr. John Kiper. And John was the former DPW city of Norfolk when we first met. And also from the board is Mr. Luke McCoy. And joining him today is your Virginia Beach representative appointed by the governor, Mr. Bill Sorrentino. So, Liesel, it is all yours, and thank you for joining us today.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I started with SIPSA in 2009 when the organization had over $280 million in debt, and they nearly ran out of cash for operating needs. So here we are 10 years later, and it gives me great pleasure to give you an overview, tell you how we're doing today now that the organization is healthy, debt-free, and well-positioned to handle the needs of our communities, our member communities, going forward. The first thing is our core purpose, which is the management of the safe and environmentally sound disposal of regional waste. Our governance, SIPSA is a public body incorporated in the state of Virginia and has all the rights, powers, and duties set forth in Chapter 51 of Title 15-2. Specifically, 15-2, 5102, which was amended in 2009, and it is commonly referred to as House Bill 1872 or the Cosgrove Bill. And this is really what started the reformation of the SIPSA organization. This bill established a 16-member Board of Directors comprised of eight governor appointee members possessing general business knowledge. They shall not be an elected official and are nominated by each member locality. In addition, we have eight ex officio members, which must be employed by each of our member communities, and you appoint one to the board. The other thing that this bill required is SIPSA's to maintain a strategic operating and financial plan. We are to evaluate landfill airspace annually, adhere to FOIA, and it also limits the executive director's authority to approve contracts in excess of $30,000 without an informed vote of the board. Sorry about that. So SIPSA operations. SIPSA staff operate, which you probably all do know, but I'll give you a quick overview. Nine transfer stations throughout southeastern Virginia. We operate the regional landfill in Suffolk. We have a transportation division, which includes 30 tractors and 40 trailers. We have a fleet maintenance operation. One shop is located in Portsmouth, and then we have another shop, which is out at the regional landfill. We have a household hazardous waste program, a tire shredding facility, a white goods and scrap metal program, and a comprehensive safety program. And we do all of this with 139 employees. Just to give you some other numbers so you can get an idea of how much tons we handle, the transfer stations handle over 600,000 tons per year, so all nine transfer stations. And this year, we're heading closer to 650. The transportation division hauls over 500,000 tons. So as all the waste comes into a transfer station, our employees push it into a tractor-trailer, and then that tractor-trailer is driven to its destination or designated disposal mechanism. They drive over 760,000 miles per year. The regional landfill currently is accepting over 325,000 tons per year. Our tire shredder processed over 458,000 tires last year. What we do with those tires is we use them on the landfill for what's called alternate daily cover. Because whenever you have trash, you have to cover it every day with something. So one of the things that we can do is use shredded tires. But the other thing that we use them for is for drainage projects. They work very well for those. Or also, too, for establishing a road base, you know, within the landfill as we move around This is a map just showing you the nine transfer stations, how they... We're all over the Hampton Roads region, except for, I guess, across the water. And then the red transportation, there's in Portsmouth. And then right there in the center of the map is the regional landfill. Our transfer stations handle a wide range of tonnage. They are sized to take anywhere from 50 tons per day to 1,500 tons per day. This is an aerial view of the regional landfill. It's not the whole picture, but these are where the cells are. So the landfill is located on 833 acres in the city of Suffolk. The first ones that popped up are cells 1 through 4. They account for 100 disposal acres, and it is officially closed, capped. We're no longer accepting waste there. Then next, we have cell 5, which is below that. It's permitted for 44 disposal acres. Then next to it is cell 6, which is permitted for 41 disposal acres. And this is the cell that we are currently accepting waste in. There will be... Five and six actually will connect and combine. So we just have built five up so high, and now we're going up to meet it. I think the numbering's a little off, because then you go back to the east, and cell 7 is currently operated as a borrow pit. It is fully permitted. The only thing we need to do is actually construct it in order to start taking waste there, and it comprised as 56 acres. Then above cell 7, we have cells 8 and 9, and those are for future expansion, which I'm sure you will be hearing about over the coming months. So the projected life of the landfill. At the current rate of disposal, the 325,000 tons per year, cells 5 and 6 should last until 2029. However, it could be as early as 2027. It's all dependent on if the volume increases, if we don't get as well of a compaction ratio, or as you're moving up and filling in a landfill, it gets more and more difficult to achieve the engineered slopes that they put that on. But we have just recently bought some GPS compaction equipment to put on our dozers, and hopefully, we will be able to achieve those designed slopes. But everybody always wants to know, well, what's the date? And it really is a floating date. So what we know today, we can say it's 2029, hopefully, but it could be earlier. But we will keep everybody informed as we go. So the total projected cost to construct cell 7, inclusive of permitting cells 8 and 9 for a borrow area, is approximately $30 million in today's dollars. What we want to do is if we can get cells 8 and 9 permitted, then we could go ahead and have staff starting now to work on excavating cell 7 to the required depth and putting that excavated material over on the cells 8 and 9. But it is in wetlands, so we have to go through a process for getting a permit to do so. But that's what we're really hoping to do. It's not so much as needing to build 8 and 9 right away, but we'd like to be able to use it as a borrow area so that we can cut construction costs when we go to build cell And cell 7, once constructed, could be filled as early as 2035 if only... And I apologize here, I used acronyms. MSW, which is municipal solid waste, if we only put municipal solid waste in the landfill, then cell 7 could be filled by 2035. So it is imperative that we get cells 8 and 9 permitted, which we are working on. Landfill leachate. You've probably heard something about some leachate levels at our landfill a couple of years ago. We had elevated levels, but it was always contained. There was never any seepage, leak, anything like that. And the situation was remedied immediately. And we have spent the past year and a half putting in a new SCADA system, which is, for those of you who may not know, it's a supervisory control and acquisition... and acquisition system. But it is a whole bunch of software and hardware elements that are all tied together to basically operate and control an industrial process like your leachate system. And that has helped tremendously. So also, speaking or continuing to speak about leachate, up until June 1st, 2018, the leachate from the regional landfill actually went to Hampton Roads Sanitation District through a force main. So there was a force main built right there at the landfill, and it took it up to a HRSD plant. Due to certain contaminants that are in the leachate and the implementation of the SWIFT program, which I'm sure you all are familiar with, HRSD requested that we redirect that leachate to another pump station. Because the Nansman plant is their demo plant, their first plant, you know, and they didn't want us complicating matters. So the great thing is HRSD approached SIPSA, and they have agreed to construct a new force main so that the leachate will go, once again, directly from the landfill, but it's going to go to a pump station in Chesapeake. They've agreed to pay for it, and they estimate... They've been estimating the cost. They will pay 2/3 of it, and SIPSA will pay no more than approximately $2.5 million. And we already have that money set aside. So 2018, a year in review. This was... I know it seems like 2018 was so far ago, since we're so well into 2019, but this really was a pivotal year for SIPSA. A lot of us like to say that we have launched SIPSA 2.0, new version. This was the day that was... January 25th was the effective date of the new use and support agreements with you and our other seven member communities. And I'd like to just take a second and, you know, we might not be here giving you this presentation today if it hadn't been for your city manager, who spearheaded getting those communities together back in 2013, I think it was, if not '12. He was the one that kept trying to herd the cats, and because of that, we have these great new use and support agreements. So SIPSA owes him, I want to say, a debt of gratitude, but we don't issue debt anymore. But thank you.
That's right. That's good.
The other thing that was so pivotal about this day was the municipal tipping fee was reduced from $125 per tonne to $65 per tonne. And we implemented what I'm calling a blended waste disposal system. So as you know, waste to energy... When you're comparing the costs of a waste-to-energy system to the operation of a landfill, a waste-to-energy system tends to be slightly higher on a cost-per-tonne basis. So knowing that we're trying to keep costs at a minimum, we are now taking the waste from the eastern transfer stations, and it has actually hauled and goes to Wheel Abraider. But all of the waste from the western transfer stations are going into the landfill. So we're getting that blended cost. You're not paying as much, you know, for it to go to Wheel Abraider, but you are getting some environmental benefit with putting it, you know, at waste-to-energy. So the Wheel Abraider agreement, you're probably familiar with it. This was a contract that was awarded last fall, and it was awarded to Wheel Abraider Portsmouth, and it went into effect on February 1st. And this was quite an undertaking. The term of the contract is from February 1st to June 30th, 2027, and that date coincides with the first expiration date of the use and support agreements. Of course, that was done intentionally. SIPSA has the option to extend the contract with Wheel Abraider for up to two additional five-year periods, but of course, we're going to have to agree on the price before that would be done. So I can't go without also thanking your governor appointee, Mr. Sorrentino. I don't know if you know, but Phil Sorrentino is the one that chaired the subcommittee of the board to actually handle all of the negotiations with Wheel Abraider. And he did an outstanding job. The committee that we had, they spent, I think we must have met nine or 10 times, because they wanted to understand the elements of the contract and what we needed. They wanted to learn all that before they even got in front of Wheel Abraider, which really made it very successful. So thank you, Bill, for all your contributions. This contract, there are no minimum tons or minimum fee. And as I mentioned, SIPSA's required to deliver the municipal waste received at the Chesapeake, Landstown, Norfolk, Oceana Transfer Stations, deliver it to the RDF plant in Portsmouth, and it's at a rate of $32 per tonne. Now, this rate will escalate over the contract. All the ash, then, that is generated from the waste-to-energy system will be delivered to our regional landfill at a rate of $25 per tonne. And whatever the $32 per tonne escalates, so does the 25. So they're always going to be at the same levels. Member communities can go ahead and haul directly to the RDF plant. For instance, the city of Portsmouth, they don't have a transfer station, so they haul their waste directly to there. City of Chesapeake also hauls there, depending on where they are collecting waste that day. So as a result of the new contract, when we looked at it last fall, the municipal tip fee was projected to be reduced to $59. Let me give a little bit of history. So January 25th of 2018, it went from $125 to $65. Then on July 1st of 2018, it went to $62. And then we projected it would go down to $59 for this coming fiscal year. However, we've had an increase in tons, and therefore, we are able to reduce the tipping fee further down to $57 per tonne. So we're even lower than what we had projected with the negotiations. Speaking of the fiscal year 20 budget, we are budgeting based on 445,000 tons of municipal waste, and this gives you the illustration of each member community's proportionate share. And then just real quickly to tell you about our budget. The fiscal year 20 budget is $43.3 million. $35.5 million is for operating expenses. $3.5 million is for capital improvements and equipment placement. The plan is SIPSA will not be issuing any debt. There's no plan for it. We are going to be cash-funding everything. So we've kind of set $3.5 million as the set amount that the tipping fee will contribute to for capital and equipment replacement each year. Now, in one year, if we don't use that $3.5, then we're setting up a reserve, so that goes over to a capital reserve. So in years that you need more than $3.5 million just because of what you're using, you'll be able to pull that instead of having to change the tipping fee. And lastly, or most importantly, $4.3 million is being set aside for future landfill expansion and closure costs. So as I mentioned, we have a big amount of money that's going to be due, less than 10 years, really. We have approximately $6 million in cash reserves today. I don't think SIPSA has ever been in this position in its life. We have $16.8 million, and that is for landfill expansion and closure. We have $3.3 million in our undesignated or rainy day fund. And I have $2.5 million for capital, and that is designated for our portion of the cost for the HRSD force main. That force main isn't to be done, I think, until 2022. But we have the money set aside, and we're prepared for it. So, you know, once again, the reason for putting $4.3 million aside every year from this point forward is because the landfill expansion is estimated at $30 million in today's dollars. And closure costs, once we open up cell 7, then we're going to need to close cells 5 and 6, and that is $16 million in today's dollars. So we have a lot of money that we're going to need, but we have a management plan spelled out and know when our potential draws are, and that's something that we'll be watching, really, day-to-day, almost. Our goals for 2019, we're going to perform a facility assessment so that we can create a long-term capital replacement schedule for all of our facilities. It's something, you know, that really hasn't been done. We've just, I guess, tended to fires. When something came up, oh my, we've got to do this. So instead, we're trying to get a plan together. We will continue to work on landfill expansion for cells 8 and 9. And I think as we get a little bit further with that, either your board representatives or myself will come back and update you on those. We're also working with HRPDC, city of Suffolk, and VDOT, and also representatives from the city of Chesapeake. We call ourselves a stakeholders group on trying to get a flyover access to the regional landfill. And this, of course, something as well that the manager, you know, was pushing for back in 2011, 2012, that we need that there at the landfill. Originally, VDOT was looking at or doing a study on, you know, because you have the Chesapeake Airport, and then you have the regional landfill. So whether or not, they were doing an environmental study to see, would it be best to just do one each, you know, or at each location? Or do you go ahead and just put one in the middle? Or do you not do it at all? And as they proceeded in this study, they came to their attention that they can't use HR TAC funds for this because it's not a congestion relief issue. So now, we're trying to find other ways to see how we can refund it. HRTPO is doing a great job on helping us. We're looking to hopefully apply for a SMART scale or put in a SMART scale application by next April. So we'll keep you informed on that. We also plan on providing various cost analysis reports so that we can show that we're operating efficiently. And provide a five-year projected budget, which I did do this year, so that you get a projected municipal tipping fee, which can help you with your budgets as you look at them in the future.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Moss.
Slide 9, I think. Yeah, 9. I assume that this Nansman plant you referred to moved away from was the one that was pumping down to the Aquifer, so you're moving this to another plant.
Yeah.
So what plant does that pumping station in Chesapeake feed? Is that the Oceana plant? What's the process? It said the pump station, but what processing do you know?
It will end up at the Atlantic Pump Station, which, from my understanding, will not be in the SWIFT program or is not planned to be in the SWIFT program.
A follow-on question is for the manager later date. I know that that leachate has a higher concentration of heavy metals and other products. I'm just curious, how the Atlantic facility processes that out? Or is it actually just being diluted and pumped out into the Atlantic Ocean? I'd just like to know. I'm not asking you, I'm just asking the manager at a later date.
Okay.
If you could answer that. And who audits compliance with your leachate recovery and the integrity of your landfills? Who audits that?
We have an engineer consultant on hire, as well as we have a landfill superintendent and assistant, so they're monitoring it. The SCADA system also...
Does the state monitor, come in periodically and monitor your facility?
DEQ does, yes.
Okay. And when was the last time of your audit, and what were the results?
They come quarterly. I think they were here in the last couple of months, and we have not had any deficiencies whatsoever.
Oh, very good. And is the escalation clause in the contract for the two fees you mentioned, is that a fixed percentage, or is that a negotiated amount each year?
Well, Mr. Sorrentino negotiated it ahead of time. So the first year, the first two years, there is no increase. Then the second year, I believe it is 2.9 for two years, and then goes down to 2.5.
So it's a percentage fixed scale?
But it is fixed, yes.
Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Anybody else? Guy.
Thank you for your presentation, Jordy. I'm a new council member, a couple of questions everybody else may know, but I don't. What is the life of a closed and kept cell? What happens to it, and how long?
It lives forever.
In exactly the same way?
It's indefinitely. Yeah, I guess it would be similar to your Mount Trashmore. But we still have to, you know, monitor the groundwater surrounding it. We still have leachate that is coming, you know, from that, that's still being generated from those cells. So we still have to monitor and maintain it.
And yet, my other question is, what is a SMART scale application?
SMART scale application is a funding process through the state of Virginia.
I'll jump on it, Liesel.
Thank you.
So the Commonwealth Transportation Board oversees all of VDOT's road system. And so what you do is you provide programs for cost participation, meaning that they provide you state dollars, and you provide local dollars, and they rate the validity of all the road projects in the state. They use congestion, and safety, and economic, and a bunch of aspects. And they go through and they rate them, and then they draw a cut line based on the amount of money they have, and that's how they distribute their state money to roads. This is Highway 58, and all the trucks for all the region are going there. And if you live in Suffolk and you have all that congestion and...
I've been on it many times.
So we, as one of the members of SIPSA, lent our support, Virginia Beach's support, which is a fairly hefty support in the whole VDOT scheme, and conversing with the regional representative of VDOT, as well as with our CTP member, John Malma, to get that point of interest. It competes with everything else. I personally think it should already have been approved in design, if not going to construction. That would have been our original plans, but other things seem to take the place, so...
Ms. Henley.
The biggest...
For SMART scale, all the localities, that's how we get our money. So other agencies and so forth also get to put money in? I mean, apply for this money?
Well, it's actually sponsored by the city of Suffolk, and we lend support to them because we find benefit for that. So the city of Norfolk, the city of Virginia Beach endorse Suffolk putting that application in, and that's how we kind of... But it's the local jurisdictions that do that.
We don't have any paths, so it doesn't affect our ability to get our in-city roads, though, if we have not allocated a certain amount. This doesn't take away from anything that we...
No, ma'am.
Hi, Guy. That's how we built the Western Bridge. We got $80 million SMART scale.
The major issue at 58 is, I'm sure you're aware, but is... The major issue with, at 58, is, I'm sure you're aware, but as you're coming from the west, there's a median in the middle, the road that you have to turn in, and then you have to cross over. It's really four lanes of traffic because we, to enter into the landfill. That's the safety issue. Unfortunately, about two months ago, one of our mechanics that was going to work there, you may have heard of the accident, died. He was hit by an oncoming tractor trailer and died there on the site. So we are really in need of wanting to get this issue resolved as soon as possible. So, but the HRTPO, VDOT, they're all, they're a great group, they're working together. VDOT also is looking at some short-term solutions after this incident happened.
Okay, thank you very much, and thanks all of you from your corporation that really reestablishing some very good confidence.
Just lastly, I would like to open, extend an open invitation to each of you to come out and see the landfill and tour it. And I'll leave my business card, so please be free to call me if you'd like to do that, or if you have any questions or concerns.
Okay, Rosemary has a quick.
Well, say, we've really come a long way, baby.
Yes.
From where we were a few years ago, and congratulations. Lou, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you all, appreciate it.
I appreciate y'all coming in today.
Thank you for having us.
Okay. So, Mayor, members of council, we have an opportunity to hear from the chairman, Executive Committee Chair from HARA, the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, Mr. Grigsby Cyphres. Greg is coming through the door. And we also have the interim executive director and former deputy city manager, the great city of Virginia Beach, Steve Herbert, joining us today. We are prepared to throw a bunch of charts up there that have all the paragraphs of the HARA master agreement. You have seen that master agreement three times, you've seen the write-up, you've had my report that thanks to the steering committee's support, to many of the recommendations that Virginia Beach asked for, that they changed the master agreement. You know, during our budget discussions, I endorsed this, and Taylor Adams is prepared to take you through that. But I think, I asked Greg and Steve if they had some time to break away from their businesses to join us today, and so I would like to have them take over the floor and talk a little bit about where HARA has been, and where it's going, and some of the initiatives, and why we are excited to start HARA 3.0, if, for lack of a better word.
Might be like version six or seven.
All right, version six or seven. And to my knowledge, Greg, I don't think you, have you been here before?
Not for this, but on some other things, yes.
Okay, so if that's okay with you, Mayor, and members of council? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Greg Cyphres, I'm a partner with Williams Mullen, but in my day job, I've been the board chair for the Economic Development Alliance for the past two years, and just recently was relieved by Brian Skinner, who's the chief banking officer for Town Bank. He's the board chair going forward. But what we thought we might do, just very quickly, is talk a little bit about what's different. And so the first slide is just the, the board is essentially 50-50 split between representatives from the cities and counties that invest in the alliance, and the private sector companies that invest in the alliance. So these are the public sector board members for 2019. And you can see elected officials from, I believe, every jurisdiction except Newport News, and Cindy Rolf, as the city manager, is their board representative there. These are the private sector representatives, and you can see the companies represented there. A number of the leading businesses throughout the region, from both the peninsula and the south side, all the franchise utilities, a couple of contractors, Branscombe being one of them, a few professional service firms, Huntington Ingalls, Centerra, Town Bank. These are ex officio, just representatives to the board, but again, Sean Avery with the Workforce Board, Jim Spoor with Reinvent Hampton Roads, John Reinhardt from the Port, pretty wide mix of businesses and industry segments, as well as a number, these are all the CEOs or presidents of those companies by and large. So if you remember, one of the tenants that we're trying to get to is engagement at the highest level from the public sector investors, elected officials there, or CAOs in the alternative. And then on the business side, CEOs and not middle-management folks, and I guess I probably fall in the middle-management category in my firm, but, so this is, I'll give you a little graphic of, with logos, of the existing private sector investors. And as of earlier this week, this slide represents about a million dollars, a little bit over that, in annual investment commitments from those companies. And you can see the way they're bracketed with the $100,000-plus at the top, and then 50 to 100 at the next level, and so forth. And you can see a few individuals represented there. Debbie Nguyen and Jerry Miller have made a personal commitment on a multi-year investment. This gets a little bit more as to why, you know, what are we, what's this all about? And if you look at all the economic statistics that either the PDC, the ODU Department, any of the economists that have studied job growth for our region over an extended period of time, our job growth has been, I'll use the polite term and say, flat. It's been nonexistent, realistically. And that's the problem. And in terms of looking forward for the future, for all the citizens here, all of our families, the employees, and our businesses, we have to shift that paradigm if we really want this region to be vital and vibrant and move forward for the next 20, 25, 50 years. And if we aren't willing to do something different, we're more likely than not going to get the same subpar results. So this is from the IBM Plant Location International Study. It is the backbone of the alliance's strategic plan. And this basically shows the opportunity, if we're successful with the changes that we're trying to implement over a 10-year period. And the, one of, a couple of interesting things there. These are new-to-market jobs, so they're not at, and only 10,000 of those are coming from, over that 10-year period, coming from attracting inbound investment, which has been the alliance's historical function, marketing the region for outside companies to invest. The real return on all the dollars and effort that people are putting into this is going to come from what I call changing the business ecosystem, the business development ecosystem in the region. We have to tackle workforce and talent, and get better at that. And that's obviously a wide-ranging topic, but it's probably, talent is the key ingredient to a successful business. I would say the same thing about government. You know, the talent, the people that come to work every day are the key to being successful. We have a, you know, we have a huge problem there, and particularly in the knowledge industries. You could look at a lot of your leading businesses around Virginia Beach, and Loan Care, LifeNet. You talk to the people who run those companies, they have open positions they can't fill, as scientists, data analytics, IT, talk to mythics, or some of the other people that are in the knowledge space. And there's a lot of reasons for that, and there are ways that we can tackle the problem, but we need to tackle the problem. If we do it well, you can see that, you know, the biggest return on that effort and the investment will be coming from, doing better on the talent and workforce piece. Sites and facilities is another big problem that we have. You know, essentially, we don't have sites that are available. We don't have what I'll call spec facilities in real estate parlance. If you want to look at downtown Norfolk, the only reason they got the ADP investment there is because they happen to have a nine-story empty building in downtown Norfolk, if they could put 2,000 people in. But absent those types of facilities, or shovel-ready sites, where you, someone can come in, buy the dirt, and 90 days later, they can pull permits and start construction versus 24 months later. If we can't get better about that, we're just not in the game for companies that want to come in and make investments, or more importantly, for the existing companies that want to grow and expand. Because the big employers have an opportunity to grow and expand here, or grow and expand in another region. And what you will find, if you look around, you know, a lot of them, the banks, LifeNet, Portfolio Recovery headquartered in Norfolk, they are growing and expanding outside Hampton Roads, even though they're headquartered here, because they can't find facilities and they can't find people. So this is an interesting slide. This is a compound annual growth rate chart, and it's looking forward over the next 10 years. So if you look at the bottom in the red, that's what Hampton Roads predicted compound annual growth rate would be over the next decade, if we don't do something intervening at scale. So if we, instead of saying we want to be number one, let's say we just want to be average. Well, if we say we want to be average when we get there, we'll be at the yellow line, and we'll be in the middle of that chart in terms of compound annual employment growth rate. And if we hit our targets, we'll be up at the green line. And those are significant improvements, even though it's, you know, you're talking about 1.2% annual growth, when you've had zero annual growth, and you look at that over a long period of time, those are real numbers in terms of high-paying, high-wage jobs and creating those in your market. This is just a little graphic about the, I think you've heard something about that, and about the primary industries that we're going to be focusing on, not to the exclusion of everything else. And these are pretty broad buckets, like software and IT, picks up cybersecurity and data analytics, and the transcontinental data pipes, and taking advantage of all of those capabilities. Shared services are, you know, that is, that's kind of the ADPs and the waypoints and the GEICOs of the world. Transportation and logistics, I think, you know, that's just taking advantage of the port of Virginia. But the, you know, not to, not to tell you anything you don't know, but the data pipes that land here from Europe and South America, that makes the region in Virginia Beach, in particular, the digital gateway for the state of Virginia and the mid-Atlantic. And we have to figure out an effective way to take advantage of that opportunity, much like John Reithard and his team are doing with the port of Virginia. Those are two big assets that we have that differentiate our market from competing regions. Now, food processing and technology, you can think about Green Mountain over in Isle of White, Massimo in Suffolk, and others, but there are significant assets here that are large employers in that space. And then the transportation technologies and manufacturing, ship repair companies, advanced manufacturing, and all the research and development that can come with that. Those are the focus areas. And the reason we're focusing on those is because the research that was done, I mean, I want to back up, all of this is data-driven. The research was done, says that our region has a competitive advantage over competing regions in these spaces. And that analysis looked at two big factors, the cost of doing business and the quality of the offering that the region has. And you chart that out on a typical graph, and you've got cost down one axis and quality on the other, and you want to be in the upper-right-hand quadrant of that, where you have low cost and high quality. And in all five of these areas in general, that's where the region was. So rather than putting our resources into areas where we are less competitive, it seems to make more business sense to primarily focus on the areas where we have a greater opportunity to win. You know, in economic development, there's, you don't get anything for second place. You know, there's a winner, and everybody else loses. So again, this is my favorite bubble chart, but this, this sort of, if you have a chance to look at this, this is what would be different. I mean, today, let's say, through the end of 2018, the alliance's core function was really simply business attraction and lead generation for the cities and counties and their ED departments. Here, the alliance is going to continue to take ownership of business attraction, but also what I call organic growth, but BRE, Business Retention and Expansion, sites and facilities. And the other, you can see where that sort of grays out, but we also have to be supportive of the other areas that really matter, like talent, which is primarily going to be in the bailiwick of the workforce boards, the colleges and universities, and the private ed folks, so they can figure out how to make a connection between what they produce and what business needs. Because right now, there's not a lot of accountability on the education side to deliver what businesses need now and five years from now. And here's another way to look at it. Again, you know, what the alliance did traditionally versus what we are growing into over the next five years. And we're tackling all of this as we have resources and staff to be, to go into that, but Steve's got a hire underway for a person whose sole job is to work on BRE, both with the cities and counties and the businesses there. And the state has done the same thing, because the state has recognized that Virginia historically has just not done a very good job about growing businesses organically and retaining businesses versus letting them expand outside Virginia. So I'm gonna, I know that was quick, and there was a lot there, but Steve is going to kind of talk about what he and his team have been doing since January 1st. And it's actually a fair amount, even though it's only four and a half months.
Thank you, Greg. This is not going to be quick or short, so just, yes, it will.
That would be a wrong answer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to talk more about the things that are going on. The part of my, this, my brief's really kind of what's, what's new for 2019, and what are we doing to execute on the philosophies and strategies that Greg has just been through with you. So right out of the box, let me say that we are, for the year-to-date, we are, we have participated and supported two new businesses coming to Hampton Roads. One is Cloverleaf Cold Storage, the other is Preferred Freezer Services. One is in Chesapeake, the other is in Portsmouth. It's 93 jobs, averaging 50K a year, $81 million in new investment, and, and those were both in January, late February timeframe. Next slide. We are currently working on 23 projects in the region. That's about a 28% increase over this time last year. Out of those 23 that are listed here, and our policy this year is that anything that comes into us at the alliance goes out to every member of the alliance. So anything we get as a lead generation, any prospect, any inquiry, every one of our member localities gets the same thing. Out of the 23, I just did some calculations coming over here, there are 15 of those that look like they had application in Virginia Beach, so after the initial review, 15 of those moved to another level. Those will sort out over the next few months to probably a lesser number, but we are seeing an increase in interest and activity. Also, the other major initiative that has changed in there, and particularly for 2019, is that we have renewed our relationship with the state, with the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. We began by restarting a quarterly face-to-face meetings, which hadn't been done in a number of years. In that, the way that format works is we take everybody to Richmond, we buy breakfast for the entire partnership staff, we take representatives from each of our 11 cities, we do a program review with the state staff, so everybody gets an opportunity to tell their counterparts in Richmond what's going on in Virginia Beach, or Chesapeake, or Portsmouth, as a direct liaison. Then we do, then we do, we do a special study, we've done BRE up there, we're going to do, we're going to do branding, we're going to do advertising, all incentive programs. We get a few minutes with the president, Stephen Murray, who gives us all a kind of an update on what the state's doing. And those have been, they've proved to be very useful, and it's not just a once-in-a-month thing. So we establish the relationships, identify the issues that are important to the state and us, and work those during the week, during the week. and us, and work those during the week, during the week and the month between these meetings. We see a lot of them down here, they have an office in the port, so we, we tag-team with the port on just about every initiative they're doing with the state right now. We are good friends with the Port of Virginia. Moving into, we are moving, as you heard from Greg, we are moving into Business Retention and Expansion. And I don't think it's any secret to anybody here, and Greg noted it, if you're really into job creation, you ought to be doing a very good job with your existing business base. Seventy to eighty percent of new jobs come out of the existing businesses here. We haven't paid a whole lot of attention to them in our history, we are now. That changes, and we will get underway. We started in a special session with the state, as Greg mentioned, they've also figured out that their numbers can improve dramatically if they get to work on that. So their representative is partnering with our representative, we are writing protocols and processes, we have briefed the red team, so every one of the eleven cities now have seen the protocols and understood how we would like to do business. In a nutshell, the way that will go forward is that there'll be a list of existing businesses that identified for, under certain criteria, to be visited, and the visit team would be somebody from the city, somebody from the alliance, and somebody from the state. And if we know more details, if we know, for example, that it's a, it's a, it's a workforce issue, then somebody from Sean Avery's shop is going with us. If it's finance, then somebody from the state's finance. If it's a, if it's a company that received a big incentive from the state four or five years ago, and nobody's heard anything about them, we're gonna go check on them and see how that's, how that, how that incentive's working out for them. So that's a major new initiative, and we're underway on that. The next one is product development. I, I know a lot of people are aware of this, but we were losing a lot of potential in businesses to people who were looking for hundred-acre sites that were shovel-ready. We're gonna lose business to people looking for twenty-five to ninety-nine acre sites that are shovel-ready. We didn't have a very good inventory. We checked at the state level through the VA scan system, they didn't have a very good inventory. But our trend analysis says that people were beating us on a pretty regular basis in other parts of the state and in other regions that we compete with. So six months ago, the Regional Planning District Commission hired the Timmins Group, we started looking at all the hundred-acre sites in eleven cities right now. And out of that came a list of at least fifteen that could pretty easily move to shovel-ready category, to a tier four or tier five, tier five category. Next week, we're into final evaluation on those. We expect when we are done, that instead of two sites, which we had for the entire region, we'll probably end up with fifteen. And that, so in terms of product development, at that size parcel, and you've got Corporate Landing is Exhibit A, a one that's going to elevate very quickly. Also, the state, the General Assembly last year authorized $2 million for the next tranche of these projects, which is twenty-five to ninety-nine acre site. There are a lot of cities in Hampton Roads that are more interested in that than the hundred-acre sites. And so that study kicks off next week, and is the final report out of that is due the end of August. So product development in terms of properties, we'll have a much better handle on here as we move into the fall. Red teams. Red teams, the regional economic development directors, every, every city, every county has, has a member. Those are, those are the eleven economic development directors. The history of those meetings, when I went back and looked at it, was spotty. And they had gone from every other month to quarterly, and a couple times, they didn't even meet on a quarter. We are back, we now meet every month. We've changed the format of these meetings to be, to be important and relevant for each of the cities that take the time to come over there. We've had 100% attendance for the, for the three meetings that we've had so far. We have included in that, the Planning District Commission now comes to those meetings, so we can, we've got questions on infrastructure, we want to talk about the impacts of sixty-four or highways, or broadband, or channel depth, we've got that. And then we try to make the connection for each of the eleven cities, why that kind of information should be moved into your marketing information. Those are competitive advantages that we have as, in this region. Harampha is in there, so we've got the same information that city managers get on what's the impact of F-22 Raptors for the city of Hampton and the region kind of thing. And Workforce Council has been a member and continues to be a member. Marketing missions, we are, we are working hard to travel together. So if, instead of us showing up at a trade show in Germany and surprising each other that we're all over there, we, we're coordinating our travel now. So we have, we even, we had a pretty aggressive schedule out, we've invited cities to go with us, we've coordinated marketing materials, we're trying to get into the same kind of targeting and marketing and advertising when we're traveling together. And then lastly, the big, the big thing that's new, of course, is what we began this conversation with, and that was the adoption of the master agreement. And that, that has been a lot of work for a lot of city managers for the last year and a half or two. I want to quickly, marketing activity here, just, this is just to show you, we, marketing is really dependent on lead generation, how do you develop the information? How do you develop the leads? How do they come in? This, we renegotiated the four contracts that we had, that we've had for years. And we are now on performance-based contracts, they're one year each, so you've got PM and P in Europe, RCI is domestic, 310 is domestic, and TBIC is Europe. And you can see the kind of shows and marketing that they are, they are setting up for us. They are now guided by the region's marketing plan, so we are, when we show up, we expect to see them bringing us leads that comply with the things that are of interest to us in Hampton Roads. This is actually about five more than last year, but a totally new emphasis on, on how we do business when we go there. We've also, we're also ramping up our domestic trips, there are ten more of those to be scheduled this coming year. The other lead generation for us, and obviously, the biggest one that we have is the state. So the EDP still generates more leads for us as they do for every other region in the state and every other city in this region than do, than any other source. So in the coming years, we're looking at making sure those things are get better, and that we generate our own lead generating. We, we are able, through our advertising companies or through our marketing, to generate our own leads for this region. Finally, last month, we rolled out, introduced our key performance metric system. We've, I don't, we've never had a way to talk about our performance before, and so this is a, this is a, this is an example here of the, much abbreviated, if you saw it, this is a monster form that we're working right now. Key performance indicators on everything that you expect, that we say that we are going to do in that agreement right now, the master agreement in there. So we can track it, we can use it to tune the program, and we can use it to report end of year. We can report it to all the investors. How'd we do? Here's what we said we were gonna do, and here's what we did. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, for fitting us in today. Appreciate the opportunity.
Hey, very good. Questions, please.
Could we go to slide six of the very first presentation?
Sure.
Thank you. First of all, very good presentation, thank you. I have some data questions on, on the.
Tell me when I hit it there, sir.
Yeah, this is right here. We all know that demographically, the workforce participation is shrinking in absolute numbers, and as a percentage of total population. So I'm trying to understand, when you talked about your target growth, and I realize that's on the next slide, but these are the areas, was that net of the current, is that in addition to the current baseline? Or, let's say we had 100,000 jobs and we grew 1% of that, or are we adjusting, normalizing those numbers for demographic issues and workforce participation shrinkage? I'm trying to understand, when you say that number, what's the baseline that it's growing from?
I don't know the answer to your question, in terms of the exact data that, that supports sort of those sort of depicted conclusions or, or opportunity, really. It is intended to show the projected opportunity for job growth over that ten-year period, but I don't know if it is net of job losses, or exactly how that's calculated, but I can, I can, there's a 165-page slide deck that, that answer is in.
The reason why I ask, because if it is a growth over the baseline today, given the shrinkage in workforce and demographics, that's a much bigger number than it might otherwise appear.
Right.
But if it's adjusted for the shrinkage of the thing before, then in reality, our number of employed people won't have grown at all, and we will have less people employed in the future than we do today because of workforce participation and aging of the workforce. So that's important numbers in terms of us as a community, in terms of workers generate more disposable income transactions than do retired people or people who aren't participating. And that's why I was asking that question. And if I could just, I understand, but I look forward to the answer. I love slide decks, it's available online, just give me the, I love to read data.
Is it up on the?
We provided you in Friday's packet a hard copy of the charts from the IBM study, correct?
Yeah, we'll make sure if we got the more detailed one.
So we'll give you the more.
Yeah, I don't know if you had.
Mr. Moss, if you were asking for that.
Super, I love, I love data. On slide eight, if you could, I, I think you're right on the markets. All those markets, maybe with the exception of shared services, are low employee to volume of revenue businesses. Those are high labor productivity businesses today for the most part. So if that's our focus, you gotta get a large number of those to really raise employment levels, because those are all very high revenues to employee businesses today.
Yeah, I guess it would depend on, on, you know, on a, on a, again, these are broad-brush categories, but if you took a typical, take Mythix as, for example, I mean, that's a, you know, one of the leading IT companies in the beach, and they've grown from virtually nothing to, last time I talked to somebody over there, they were, they were growing past 450 employees.
Well, can be, still can have high volume of revenue and high labor productivity.
No, I, I don't disagree with you.
For example, just today on the market, there was a company in Kentucky that's building a sixty-acre, you probably saw this on CNBC, sixty-acre glass greenhouse, not a warehouse, a glass greenhouse, and they raised 83 million dollars of cash in about five days. And that, and my point has always been liquidity is in the marketplace for things that return money. So I'm trying to wonder, since you said we were losing out to other places, it's not for lack of liquidity, not for lack of, of assets. So when we look at these charac, these characteristics, maybe it's in that report, and I realize it isn't just acreage isn't the only reason.
Right.
It's, and I hope it may, it's in that larger report, what are the gaps, or, or the weaknesses relative to the people who also have their own weaknesses, that as we go forward, that allow us to be competitive against the peer group that you identified in terms of those businesses? Because you can go out in Silicon Valley, the housing's expensive, but people still want to live there. They're in that migration, they lost middle-class people, but they gained wealthy people. It's kind of an interesting thing, or Seattle, look at those markets. So I'm just trying to, I know it's not a strategy is leads, but I think you are in the right markets, but I, I'm trying to track this marketplace to the growth in employment, because these things tend not to be high-density employee sectors, as a general rule.
One, one comment, I, I'm not, I'm not quibbling with what you said, but keep in mind that the real return on investment for us is not going to come from attracting new inbound investment from outside the market. The real return on investment is going to come from organic growth inside the market. And the, the key component of that is doing better on our workforce and talent piece.
Well, when you go, if I could, just to follow up, I'll be, just a last question, if I could. This is an important piece of strategy.
Sure.
Because the strategy is not executable, and the data tells a lot of stories. So when you look at the talent piece, and the workforce that you have over the next ten years, is the workforce you have for the most part, the graduating young people don't add significantly to that overall number. And a constant study, Dr. Cook has said it several times, the biggest deficit we have is skilled workforce.
Yep.
So I, I think, as, as a council, as a community as a whole, I think the pitch we really need to see, if that's the key keystone of making this work, is what is that talent plan that's going to change that weakness, that makes those numbers executable over the next ten years, I think is the real gap?
I think, just echoing, I think what, what the key, what I see to this, is that, can you go to slide seven for me? It's the fact that when you look at growth and potential targets of metro areas combined, we are dead last. And when you talk about our assets, our assets is investing in K through 12 education, getting those, those students ready to, when they do come along in the workforce, they already have the schools and talents and specific traits they need to contribute to that, to that revenue. But I think the bigger issue is how we view ourselves, and it's, it's no longer our, our problems are just confined to city limits, it is spreading around our entire region. You know, and we look at our region, I think we have to start looking at it from a team perspective, if you, if you, if you look at it that way. And not only are we, we dead last when it comes to a region like Charlotte and Atlanta and Charleston, these other, these other areas, but even compared to Northern Virginia in, in our own state here. You know, when it comes down to state funding, when it comes to transportation, or our local economy, they are, they are wiping the slate with us. And it's because we are not viewing ourselves as one region, we're viewing ourselves as Virginia Beach versus Norfolk, or Norfolk versus Suffolk, or here and the other, where we are coastal Virginia Hampton Roads together. So when I look at the numbers of where we should be, it's the fact that we have to start working together regionally-wise to where we can attract those young professionals and use what we do have organically here to grow it. We have the access, we have the resources here. So now it's about commitment and, and investment to our, to our region to, to grow. So, you know, I see the, the issues that we have, but we have all the tools that are in place, we just have to now start putting them in order, and start prioritizing us so we can get the numbers that we need here. So Hampton Roads, we, we are, we are unlike any other region there is, but we have to be leaders. We have to start leading from this aspect of it. We can no longer just remain stagnant, or just overlooking our specific issues, because we have some hefty issues and hefty things that, that can help us. If we work together, stronger together, help us alleviate a lot of those concerns if we were, were to work together. So, thank you for your.
Anybody else? Guy?
I would just echo what Councilman Rouse just said, I couldn't have said it better. One, I'd like to say hello to my old friend, Greg.
Thanks, Guy.
Great to see you, and thanks for a great presentation. I just, I've been working in regional things since back in the eighties, so it's really been interested to see the culmination of many years of work come to the current makeup, direction, and momentum of the alliance. It's, it's very exciting and very pleasing, and I, I hope that you have the resources and staff to make it work. Which brings me to my only question, when you mentioned about subject to limitations of resource and staff, do you have any comments on that in terms of the support that you're getting? Are you?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Guy. And if you don't mind, I'm gonna sort of segue between the, the last two or three comments, but, you know, we, we didn't purposely didn't bring a lot of the data around what the challenge is, but there's one graphic that I'm sure Taylor and, and the city manager have seen that, and some of you, whoever is attending the PDC meetings. They did a chart and an analysis of thirty-five regions in the United States for the population of one to three million, and looked at their employment growth over a ten-year period. And of those thirty-five regions, Hampton Roads was dead last. And you can, you can see the chart, you can see who's on the high end and who's on the low end, and Richmond is, I don't know, maybe a quartile higher than we are in their other regions. But the point simply is, is that we're losing population in the key working cohort, age 25 to 54. So Virginia Beach is every single city and county in the region is losing population in those areas, it's not just college grads. And that's the problem, we're hollowing out the labor pool, and that, if we don't reverse that trend over a period of time, the long-term implications of that are pretty clear, in terms of where the region goes for, you know, not just next year or the year after that, but ten years and fifteen and twenty years down the road. And these are long-term investments with, with not necessarily an immediate return on investment. And I, and I know for businesses and, and for government, you have to come to grips with the fact that these are long-term investments, and we're, we're raising resources both from the public. And we're, we're raising resources both from the public sector and the private sector. But the, one of the key principles in the master agreement was that we would start with a budget of $4 million a year, equally funded by business and government. And that is based on what we've benchmarked against other high-performing regions, is adequate to get us sort of in the game. But a lot of our competitors are at, you know, 50% higher than that in terms of resources. There's no reason why we can't grow into a higher number, but particularly from the private side. The, the alliance for a long time has been underfunded by business, not by government, but underfunded by business. And getting some of the CEOs of the larger companies to actually recognize that and say, yes, we're going to put resources into this has been significant because that hasn't happened for a very long time. And, you know, just one that I'm familiar with because I've read their story is Omaha. Omaha, Nebraska is not a, you know, it's a smaller community than ours. But they're doing, they've done the same thing. Their last go-around, they had 16 companies there that put $100,000 a year commitment for five years. And that's just 16 out of the whole, of all the businesses in that community. And, you know, they're smaller than we are significantly.
There's 18 billionaires in Omaha, Nebraska.
Yeah, and we, you know, but there are, but there are a lot of wealthy people in this community too.
But it's not 18 billionaires.
We have a lot of billionaires here in Virginia, though, a lot.
But there are also a lot of very successful companies that just have been on the sidelines for a long time.
Hey, Sabrina, then Jess.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's good to see that you have implicated or implement all of the, or a lot of the constructive criticism that we gave. And it's good to see that, and it makes me very hopeful that we will be successful with your new structure. But can you just reiterate for me the fact that since Virginia Beach is such a major player in this, in Hereta, what is the implication if Virginia Beach pulls out and they're not a part of it?
Interesting question. We, I would say, when I say we, when, and there was a small group of us that got started on the whole master agreement and the whole process about nine months ago. And, you know, we started with, we want to get as many of the cities and counties in the game as we can. But if somebody said they didn't want to play, we weren't going to stop at that. We would still try to build the most effective organization that we can. And my view about those things is if you start worrying about, you know, sort of the negative part of that, but if you build an effective business, even though it's a sort of a nonprofit, if you will, if you do that and you do it well, then others are going to join you. And we're starting to see that even with the upper peninsula, cities and counties that had poured, pulled out from the alliance about three, four years ago and set up their own ED organization, City of Williamsburg, James City County, and York County. We've had conversations with them this, this year, and they're actually now meeting with our red team meetings. And there's a provision in that master agreement that makes it easy for any other city or county government to join and participate as a full-fledged member. But I don't think there's any question that if you do the analysis, that any individual city or county is going to be less, less successful doing economic development just on their own than they would be working with the region to do it regionally. The economic unit for, around the country are regions, not, you know, political jurisdictions. The other thing I would say is just because it's a pet peeve of mine is, you know, we always, in Hampton Roads, we're always, we try to say to ourselves, well, we've got a problem because we're separated by the port and the, and the river and Chesapeake Bay. And yet, when you look around the country, there are other regions, I mean, pick Cincinnati, for example, they got a river going right down the middle. Their region has got three states and over 40 different cities and towns. You know, that's, that's just an excuse that we got to stop using. We can, it's just a challenge that we have to deal with. But we have the opportunity here to work together and to use that tagline, stronger together. And that's really my answer, is that we're always going to be stronger together than we would be as individuals.
Jess?
I'm very interested in the VRE, and at a later date, I'd love to learn more specifically of what you all are planning on doing. Because the biggest complaint I hear from around the community is that Virginia Beach, and I won't speak for any of the other jurisdictions, but that we don't put enough emphasis on what we already have and how we can elevate that and take it to the next level. And when you look at any of these big enormous companies, their municipalities invested in them and their states invested in them. And that's why they became the fighters that they are in their, in their specific industries. And it will always be less expensive for us to grow business versus try to bring it in. And so I'm, I'm just more, this is more of just a kind of a comment that I'm, I'm happy to see that that's where the direction we're going. But I would really love to have more information on what you all are specifically going to be doing, and that doesn't have to be another presentation.
Yeah, that's good because we're just getting started.
I just think, I think it's, that is something I'd like to really see us hyper-focused on because I think there's a lot of opportunity there.
We set up the formal guidelines, some of the protocols and the business intelligence that's going to go into the certification process.
Yeah, I would love that. Thank you very much.
The other thing I would say is that if you think about the workforce and talent piece, one of the things where other regions have been successful is because they've built clusters of companies. If you think of Seattle, people will go to Seattle and take a job there. And they don't, aren't all that concerned about whether that job that they might take, particularly in an IT position, whether that's going to work out for them, because there's 25 other companies in that market that they can transfer and get another job. We don't have, you know, we're a mile wide and an inch deep in most of our industry segments that matter. And that's where we have to, that organic growth and building clusters that have some depth through them in a lot of different companies, that's, will be one of the key parts of solving the talent piece over, over the long haul.
Anybody else? All right, let me just end by saying thank you, but I think it's essential going forward that we have vehicles that take us to the next, next level about bringing new business to the city and this region. You know, the fact that we're last, we never benefited from the recovery that the rest of the country had. And the way we do that is new innovation, new thinking, and bringing in those new businesses. Recently, I did a groundbreaking for a company called Point One. And they're a high-tech company, and they're coming in, they're bringing $80 million of investment to here. I recently went to IMS Gear, and they, what an operation they have there. Oh my God, you, you wouldn't even believe it when you go into massive. They, they process tons of steel a day. And they have an apprentice program that they have where they actually train their own apprentices and everything. And they're all pretty well high-paying jobs. And some of the equipment they got in there are a million dollars a piece to make these things. And, you know, we just have the opportunity going forward, and Aaron's right. You know, we got to take the lead in going forward because we have a lot of bills and obligations going forward. And we got to bring in that new money to, you know, satisfy those obligations. And one of the things we're trying to do, you know, first of all, Sean Avery through, you know, the thing workforce, creating the workforce, maybe even for jobs and technologies that don't exist yet, you know, going forward. But, you know, the, the shipyard, you know, you got a brief in there that they have apprentice programs where if people successfully complete them, the companies will reimburse people for their education. So we are, you know, starting to take, you know, kind of the lead with Tidewater Community and Tom and Nelson in terms of regular workforce housing. But another initiative we have, we're trying to get the universities together from the south side and the north side to form that research consortium, you know, that would not only bring companies in, but would provide intern opportunities for people to work for these companies. But, you know, we're starting to get, I think with the broadband coming in, I think we're going to have a new interest. You know, I think, you know, by aggressively pursuing things. And, you know, I guess one of the things I would like to do, and I heard Jess say it a number of times, and we've heard it a lot, about everybody graduating from Virginia Tech and Virginia and William &amp; Mary and going to work up north. I would like them to come back here. I think we got a better quality of life here. It's a cheaper quality of life. We got the good schools, we got an ocean, and we got, we got that quality of life. What we don't have for them yet are those really good job opportunities that they can come down here and raise their families. So I think by aggressively pursuing these type of initiatives that we have, and Jess, you're right. It's also about new job, you know, startup, but also expansion, incubating right here, and I think going forward. So I think we have to have that multi-pronged approach, you know, to, to it going forward. But, you know, we're going to have to work with the other cities too, you know, Aaron's right about that. We might have a company that opens up in Chesapeake, but a lot of folks are going to live right here on Virginia Beach. So, you know, we're, we're going to do very well there. But, you know, thank you. This is an exciting possibility. And, you know, let's be like Larry the Cable Guy, get it done.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Craig, thanks, Steve. Mayor, might I suggest that because we've had another item added to our executive session today, which is a rather lengthy discussion, I would like to request that we push our, our lakes, Princess Anne Plaza and Windsor Woods Combined Drainage Project briefing to the workshop next Tuesday. It's, it's a, it's a rather lengthy discussion about a very important project, a lot of concepts in there, but a lot of hard work's been done. And I think that we just move quickly into a discussion on Piney Grove. So is that okay that we push that out?
That would be okay. And if it's okay to our guests, be sure, we just want to make sure that you have adequate time that we will address your concerns and needs. So if it's okay, we will put it on the agenda next week for a while.
It works out.
Okay? Thank you.
So, so our fourth item was the Piney Grove Baptist Church parking lot lighting update. And so, Ms. Henley, we did have your planning director and we did have your zoning administrator visit the site. I did receive your email that you were unable to, to get there. But they're here to present to the council, to tell them what they actually observed and to respond to exactly what this ordinance is about.
This ordinance, of course, is a, the request to modify that original condition about having motion sensors. But the company, the church did agree to put in the motion sensors. And we had an extremely good meeting in, I guess, maybe January with the company that was going to do the work. The problem is they only installed the lights last week. And what I'm hearing is that there's still a couple of little tweaks. And I know that, you know, when you put them up, maybe it was, but like, I understand that last night, they were still on after 10 o'clock. And it was just really, since there's not been any time to see if it's working right, if, if we just delayed it to our next meeting to, to make sure everything is, is right. Because the, Mr. Pace, the company and the consultant, they were just so good about assuring that it was all going to be right. And I'm getting the feedback that there are some things, I think maybe the day they were installed, when were they installed last Wednesday?
They were installed last Wednesday, that's correct.
So they haven't even been in a week to see if it's working. So, but it's good. Y'all go ahead and tell us what they did. But I'm kind of getting feedback that we might need to just give them a chance to get out there and adjust things a little bit. But I'm so glad that it's this close.
So, so, Ms. Henley, just to remind the council what this action really is. This action is a withdrawal of the request for an exception to the CUP that was ordinance by you all to allow them to build the parking lot. It, it is an acquiescence to the CIP saying, yeah, we're going to put the motion sensors in, we're going to do what you told me. I tried to get around not doing it, but because they invented the technology to do it.
That was invented before. They were just a little slow. But I am so glad it's almost here.
So, so your action today is just to remove that, but they're still going to have to be compliant.
And we haven't got the landscaping in, and we haven't got the drainage in. And as soon as we say it's all done, we'll probably, I'm worried we will never see it done. But I would like to hear what you have to say.
So, thank you, Ms. Henley, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before, I'm going to hand this over to Kevin Kemp, the zoning administrator, who's been deeply aware of this from the beginning. And so, yes, ma'am, what, what I want to do is just, just let you know that zoning enforcement will still happen regardless of if this item is, it will happen regardless if this item is continued or if it's withdrawn. The deferral of this item doesn't keep it on our radar. If there's a, if there is a complaint of non-compliance with a conditional use permit, as with any site, we will go out and we will inspect it and we will continue to, we will continue to work on it.
Inspection, just, just much. And they're not done yet.
And, and we have a slide showing the.
Confidence is there. There, there is.
And we understand. And, but the key is, is that we do have an enforcement mechanism that's in place, not to hold a spot on the, on a council agenda, but we do have an opportunity to, to continue to work with them. We have a slide showing their landscaping that they've installed and other things, and I'll have Kevin kind of go over it. But we are continuing to work with them through the lights. I was there last night at 9:00. Kevin was there at 11:30 PM, inspecting the lights to see how they functioned. But I'll, I'll hand it over to Kevin at this point, just to kind of give a quick history and then kind of run through how we are in enforcement.
Thank you, Ma'am. Yeah, I guess I'll leave it up to council if you'd like me to run through a brief history or not. I know this item has been, you know, before you several times before, we've been working with it since 2015. But here's, here's, we actually do have new council members, so I will, we'll go over this real quickly. In 2015, this item went to Planning Commission. At Planning Commission, concerns over parking and traffic were raised. Planning suggested that they expand the parking lot before there was just a house. And they wanted to do half of the land with parking. Planning Commission convinced them and conditioned that they do the whole thing. City Council, you approved the application in July 2015. There was a condition for the lighting written between the Planning Commission and City Council meeting that required motion sensors. The point of this condition was to protect the adjacent neighbor residential properties from glare and light pollution. Site plan was approved October 2016 with construction for, over the next couple of years. In May 2017, the neighbors expressed concerns to staff about the light being bright, drainage issues, and landscaping issues. We have been working with the church and the neighbors for a couple of years since then now. If you remember December, Barry gave a brief that outlined everything. Which leads us to the item before you now. It was heard by Planning Commission on November 14th. What the request is, was, or is, to remove the condition that required them to have motion sensors. Staff recommended approval of this. Staff did not feel that motion sensors would improve the impact it was having on the neighboring residential properties. Planning Commission recommended denial, their point being that the church had conditioned this and they should live up to what the church had conditioned. That leads us to City Council in January, where, there's actually a typo there. It was deferred for four months to give the church a chance to install the motion sensors and to fix that. As Councilwoman Henley said, in January, we met with the consultant. They filled us in on the plan to install nine new fixtures, showing in circles there. And these were programmable with each light. Each light could be dimmed, the color could be adjusted. And what they would do is when the lights were on at 10 o'clock, they would dim them, or at 8 o'clock, they would dim them. And at 10 o'clock, they would then go on to motion sensors. These lights were installed, as Bobby said, they were installed on Wednesday. We had zoning supervisor out there during the programming that night. Took the better part of the day to install. They set up the shields, they programmed it. Since then, Bobby has been out to the site. I was up, out at the site last night at 11:30. I can say that the lights, when I got there, the two rear lights were on and by the street were on. The middle ones did go on when I went by, the motion sensors worked. They were also dimmed almost so low. I mean, it was the minimum light to, to do the parking lot. Both Bobby and I walked the property, and I can assure you there was no glare, even with those rear lights on. There was no glare on the residential property. Couldn't even see a shadow there. So that is where we stand right now. Landscaping, as you mentioned, we sent out a letter to them. There were four outstanding items. They were minor in nature. They needed to replace a dead tree, remove a few dead trees and a few dead shrubs. And I will show you pictures. We were out this morning and took pictures of the landscaping, which I'll show you so you can get an idea of their compliance. And the drainage, finally, the ASBILT was submitted. We had four minor comments. The final solid and hand-regating is scheduled for this Thursday, after which staff will do a follow-up inspection. do a follow-up inspection. If it meets, then they will conform to all the drainage. And so, I know landscaping has been an issue, so I just wanted to show council pictures that were taken this morning of the landscaping. This is the front of the church. This is the area along Bald Eagle. This was one of the areas of contention last fall. They came in and, you know, this was overgrown with weeds, and they came in there and just hacked everything up. The regrowth has been pretty significant, and these shrubs were newly planted. Everything appears to be healthy. Here's additional area. They went in, originally, the grass was having trouble catching. They went in, they put a net, they reseeded a couple of times, and it's really starting to come around. Here is the buffer along the northern property line with the shrubs. And then here is the western property line adjacent to residential. Of the shrubs, we took a survey and about, of the 80 shrubs, about 20 to 30 of them were between 12 and 24 inches. These were ones that were replaced. If you remember, when they had the snow, they plowed the snow over it and killed a bunch of shrubs. They've replaced those. They seem to be growing well. There was only one shrub that was dead, and that was cited in my letter. And there again is the view from Bald Eagle. You know, in staff's opinion, the landscaping is coming in very well and will be a significant buffer. And with that, I will open it up to questions and conversation.
Okay, okay.
Is there anybody who's here to speak? The neighbors?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, city council comments. Anybody got comments? John?
I have a liaison report. I went to the MEAC meeting yesterday. It was a joint meeting of the Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, and all of the MEAC committees. And they had really three things they talked about. One, they talked about updates on the Veterans Employment Center. I'll provide that by a separate email so you can get the detail of what they've done. But the key point there, they mentioned, is that the average job that when they place people was 46,000. And many people were disappointed by those offerings. And one of the reasons why people are not staying in the region is because the recruiters are telling them, if you wanna make better money, if you wanna advance your career, Tywin is a place for a job, but not necessarily a career at their salary expectations. So that kind of mimics the report here today. But they're doing great work in terms of finding people jobs. But the big one was the opportunity by the February letter from SecNav and his willingness and wanting to establish a naval community college. And they're looking for some way to do that. The Air Force has one in Montgomery, Alabama. And they do everything virtually, but some stuff in residence, but they're looking for a big initiative. So obviously, they were looking for a way to solicit and respond to that overall initiative. And they're gonna send out a letter they'd like you for the cities to consider and support. So I'll be forwarding that along to Amanda so she can get that to you, and we can decide if a letter is recognized or not. And there was a lot of discussion about maritime industry, 'cause that is a high-skill area with long-term employment. If you look at the Navy's public presidential budget, 30-year shipbuilding program, so that is an area of growth employment. And so that's an area where certainly our technical schools and things that we have can get people on board to fill those spots. And there is an aging workforce there, too. That was the highlight of the time of the press. And I won't cover the, I'll cover next week, the meeting of the Community Development Corporation. And that will be tomorrow.
Thanks, John. That was some very good information. Rosemary, then, Michael.
I just wanted to say that the state broadband advisory council is going to be in town tomorrow, from 12:30 to 2:30. I'm so glad I, it's gonna be here and I don't have to drive to Roanoke. So if anybody would like to join, and it's gonna be at the Virginia Beach Convention Center at 12:30 tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
And I just wanted to say, I had an opportunity to attend the meeting for the, our Human Rights Commission a couple of weeks ago. And at that meeting, they had a recap of the events surrounding something in the water. But what was particularly striking to me, in addition to the recap, was the number of stakeholders that were around the table and who attended that meeting. There's been a very special partnership between the Human Rights Commission and the Resort Advisory Commission that has, that has developed over the course of discussions about College Beach Weekend. But I just wanna point out first to applaud their efforts about generating positive conversation about how we work together to make our city better. And I wanna point out, too, that the impacts of those relationships go far beyond the resort or College Beach Weekend or something in the water, that these two commissions are working collaboratively to develop meaningful, positive relationships that bring people from diverse points of view together, and it's enhancing quality of life in every neighborhood. And I thought it was really wonderful, and I was proud to see that dialogue occurring.
Yeah, and thank you. Sabrina? Oh, no, did you want?
Yeah, I do. Two things. I did attend the 2040 commission meeting, and Ron Williams and Bobby Tahan gave a great presentation on where, you know, our retreat and where we are as a council. One of the things I sensed from the comments from those on the committee who work very hard and are very passionate about supporting our city and what we're doing, is they wanna know when it's a good time to come and present what they do. Because from what I understand as a council, some people in the council are not sure what they do. And so, I believe it was suggested by Mr. Williams that give, you know, give us some time to kinda, you know, move forward with what we have and then bring them in and let them have a chance to implement or align with what we're doing. And so, my question is, for the council to get a consensus, when would you like to have them do that presentation? Is it gonna be waiting until that point or having them come in? Maybe sometime, you know, before then? Because they wanna know. They're in limbo as to, you know, what they should be doing. And I think we owe them...
Well, I tell you what, I agree. And we do have a governance meeting coming up, you know, pretty soon, and we can certainly make that part of the agenda and really discuss it. And the idea is one, to bring them in and, you know, to talk about their mission and everything. So if we, that'll be very near future, and we can give them a definitive answer.
So just let them know to wait?
Yeah, it'll be, you know, but we, you know, but be assured, they will be invited. It's just a matter of when.
I'll let them know that, because every time I go, they ask the same question.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you would like, I'd be glad to attend one of their meetings with you.
That would be great.
And, you know, we can, you know, I'll be glad to give them a listen.
My other, other point I want to make sure everyone knows is that tomorrow is disparity forum will take place tomorrow at 6:00 PM at the Sandler Center. Everyone received the flyer and the invitation. You're all welcome to attend.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Barbara?
The Hampton Roads Planning District Resiliency Subcommittee met Friday, and we had with us some of the members of the Commonwealth Transportation Board. And it was a very good discussion about possible funding for flooding, because of course, we know that we, and not only for state help, but also federal. We do have representatives from the, our congressional delegations there as well. So it was a very good spirited discussion. I want you all to know, there's maybe hope. We did talk about the smart scale and the fact that there's no rating allowed for flooding as it is now. I suggested maybe it would come under the safety aspect, which gets very few points for us. So we didn't certainly come to any conclusions, but I just want you to know, it was a very good discussion. And to see the three levels of government all being very concerned, I think, gave me a lot of hope.
Okay, thank you very much. Jess?
Wanted to share, I had shared the last, I guess, not before the budget vote, that Ferry Point Park had opened, and we did the ribbon cutting. If you all have not had a chance to go down there, I would highly recommend it. It's a beautiful new park. We had a lot of people there representing a lot of different boards and commissions throughout the state of Virginia. And the biggest thing I took away from that ribbon cutting is, is that there are a lot of independent agencies and boards that are ready to give money, to help kind of gather land and properties that have a flood risk and convert them into something usable to the community like a park. And I really think that this is gonna be a great opportunity for us to take this model with the Elizabeth River Land Trust and implement it across the city and what we can do with those properties and end up qualifying as severe repetitive loss. 'Cause it's gonna be a great asset to this community, and I think, I think there's a tremendous opportunity there.
Okay, all right. Yeah, John?
I've had a council concern, appropriations. And I don't wanna mention here, 'cause time constrained, but if at the close of the council meeting, as I shared with the city manager above, I know a lot of news media was down at Sandbridge today. I got calls interviewing residents about what they thought, why they weren't getting sand replenishment and whatnot. I would just like the city manager at the end, just to give an update of where we are and why we are at where we're at. I got those calls on my way down here today, that they were down there interviewing residents. I just wanna make sure the larger public gets a refresh of where we're at and why we're there.
We've said it many times, but...
So, in 30 seconds or less, as we briefed the council before, we have two major sand replenishment projects. We've awarded one to, the Corps of Engineers is, of course, managing these. They've awarded the main beach. They are, they're mobilizing. They're gonna pump sand. They are gonna pump sand during the middle of the summer season. We are gonna spend a day and a half or, a day or a day and a half, we're gonna move down that beach, and we're gonna manage that. And the hoteliers and rack are aware of it, and they understand how important it is to get the beach. We've got an RFP on the street that will be bid opening for Sandbridge. We got a turtle season that Mother Nature and the Lord can't change the dynamics of that. And so, you just can't pump sand during that window. And depending on who wins that bid and how fast they move and whether or not they can do anything before the turtle season, we'll see whether they make it. But in all likelihood, Sandbridge will get the sand after the turtles.
I think the bids are in, and they just need to be certified.
Speaking of turtle season, yeah, so just for the public to know, stop digging holes that are much deeper than your kneecaps, because that affects turtles laying their eggs. And the mothers need to be able to lay their eggs and get back out. So just a little bit of info for everybody who's watching. Please let the sea turtles be able to plant their...
That's why we have council comments.
Lay their eggs and get out. But that's important, 'cause Virginia Aquarium, they...
Biology 101, right?
That's very important.
Aaron, thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
Okay, at this point, can we do council agenda review? Mr. Wood?
Under ordinances and resolutions, we have speakers. For speaker on item H1, H2, H5, H6A. So does anybody have any issues?
Would you read them on which one?
H1, H2, H5, and H6A.
Council, you have a letter from me with regards to H1, because the terms have changed, requesting a deferral for two weeks.
We have more than one speaker on H1, so even though it's a deferral, we have more than one speaker on that one.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So is everybody okay with the rest?
Just say, on item two, that was a request for a withdrawal.
Right.
Is that from someone?
I just got the email this afternoon, so...
No, it's, it's...
Wanted to say someone to speak, so...
Is it, I mean, a citizen that just wanted to say thank you? Or is it that one? Or is it someone else? Okay, all right.
I don't know that it's withdrawal, maybe they'll decide, maybe they'll change the line.
Okay, I thought it was done. All right.
Fall out of my chair.
And item three, we, we have, the city has requested a deferral. Isn't that correct?
Is there a request of deferral on item three?
The city sent an email yesterday.
All right, so item three would be consent for deferral? For how long?
Three. Encroachments in Sandbridge, yes?
Yes, that's correct.
For how long?
I believe it's 30 days, so that we can, so that public works can reach back out to the...
Do you have a date?
30 days, was that it? Mark?
That'd be good.
Okay.
Or do you wanna do indefinite, or do you want a 30-day?
June 18th. We should be able to take care of it 30 days.
June 18th? Does that work?
I'm gonna make sure that's a Tuesday, okay.
That's a Tuesday. Yeah, it's a Tuesday.
All right, so how about item four and item 6B? Anybody, everybody okay with those?
So we are deferring three, we are approving four, and we are approving 6B.
Right.
Everything else is pulled.
And everything else is pulled, yeah. All right, under planning, Glaciel S. Scott Jr., street closure, Ray, unimproved unnamed alley adjacent to the rear of a vacant parcel on Vanderbilt Avenue, approximately 375 square feet from Croatan Road, District 6, Beach District. Mr. Tower? You okay with this?
Oh, I'm sorry. Say, which one?
Are you okay with this one?
Number one.
Planning one.
Yes. Okay.
I just have one comment. Not on that specifically, but I wanna thank the staff for the excellent map. But it looks like there's a lot of property that could be abandoned, that could be declared access and imparted to the property owners. And I was just curious, I'd leave it to your discretion, whether or not we wanted to have a more, at your initiative, more comprehensive engagement with all the public and just maybe have one consolidated...
That was my only question, is why, why do we have to do this one at a time? Can't we save us the, is that...
Well, you can, but there's a, there's a, there's a cost associated on the part of the property owner, and not all property owners actually wanna do it.
I was gonna say, take some initiative on your part, but I would encourage you.
What's the fee instruction with that? Is there a fee?
Trying to multiply my head doing this how many times.
Right. Item two, we've got a speaker on. Item three, we have a speaker on. Item four, Piney Grove, what was the decision on that one, Barbara?
Do we not, do we not have a speaker at this point?
No speakers.
Well, we'll see if there's a speaker.
Okay, if there's not, then...
I have a question for item four.
I will not be approving it until I see it's right, but you all can do what you want.
So do you wanna defer it?
No, if y'all want to. Mr. Hanson seems to think it needs to be acted on.
Aaron?
I just had a que, I'm open to deferral. I just wanna understand where, this is for, to take the conditions off, right?
No, 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 no. Mr. Ralphs, they requested to remove the condition.
Right.
Now that they have, because they didn't wanna put the devices on.
Right.
Now that they've put the devices on, they've submitted a letter to say, we'd like to withdraw our request to withdraw, and we're fine with the way the CUP is.
This is sort of a draw, right?
So, so you're just going to...
They're asking for withdrawal. Ms. Henley, the district council member wants to make sure that everything's done before...
And to hear the speakers.
I'm open for that, yeah. We can defer if you want.
So...
You would be open to defer it until the next meeting, just until the next meeting.
Yep.
What's the next meeting?
June 2nd or something like that. Fourth.
Fourth.
June 4th. So, everybody okay with consent for deferral to June 4th?
I just wanna make sure, I really, I'm sorry to belabor the point. I just wanna make sure that I understand it very clearly also. It's, the ordinance would have the effect of withdrawing the condition of motion sensor lights?
Right.
Withdrawing their application.
They modify it.
They have actually installed it now, but we just wanna make sure it's right.
It's just been, it's going on for a long time, so...
It's never ending.
I think it's gonna end June 4th.
And I followed it a little. I've seen it, I've seen some of the discussions, but...
I think we'll, I'm pretty confident we can end it June 4th, as long as we can make it sure everybody's right.
If we can move on, we have, we gotta get to executive.
Item five, we have a speaker on that one. Item six, Phil Kellum, VBK Properties LLC, Assembly Use...
I am fine, but I look at all these rec, these conditions, and it worries me when I see the way the other one has gone through. But I just wanna note, in this one and in the next one, the Valley Hoos, item two says, "All lighting shall be contained on the subject property. The source of the light is to be shielded so as not to be visible from the property line of adjacent residential properties." Okay, we're saying that the light isn't even gonna be visible from the neighbors, and it's gonna be shielded. it's going to be shielded. Now, can we actually do that? Because what I've been being told for years is, you can't do that.
Well, that property probably so, because there's no housing right there, there's a high ridge of waterway.
Oh, it is.
Just further way over.
Oh, no, no, Kellum it is.
Oh, no, and not with Valley Hoos.
Okay, number seven, we got a speaker on that, so that's...
Well, okay, but I mean, it's, it's a condition on the structural.
So is, so is item six...
And I don't want to get in the same thing again.
Bobby, is that possible? I'm sorry, Dan.
The shielding is possible, which is the key that deals with the glare.